Okay, we'd like to call this special meeting to order at six o'clock or I guess 6:01 now. Um, would you stand with me as we say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call please. Mrs. Petrie. Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Schuchler.
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie. Mrs. Saharsky. Mr. Stevenson. Mrs. Welker. Yes. We would like to thank you for attending this evening as we um will be discussing the reentry plan. Um, and we'll give you a chance as well to address the board. Um, before we do that, we need to approve the agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, Eric and Angie. Any questions about the agenda? All in favor of approving the agenda, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. We have two um visitors who would like to address the board this evening. I will tell you that you will be given three minutes. And I will have the timer running and when the timer goes off, you know that your time has expired. Um, I'm assuming your topics, yes, are on the reentry plan, so please try to stay on topic this evening. And the sunshine law limits the ability of board members to address some things as you're speaking. But as a group, we'll, we'll try to get in um some information if you have questions or whatever. We'll do our best with that. Um, when you come forward, please stand at the microphone so that the audience can hear you and the board can hear you and it um will be heard on the videotape as well. Okay? So we'll have um Ms. Ashley Smith come forward. Hi.
Hello.
And your time has started.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Ashley Smith and I served as one of the music teachers of the primary school. I would first like to thank you for allowing me to speak as I wish to express my concerns as a special area teacher in regards to the reentry plan. To date, the other music teacher and I have been able to adjust our lessons from a pedagogical standpoint in a way that closely resembles our regular methods and flow of teaching. Our subject is largely taught through games and musical experiences. Small class sizes and shorter instructional times have allowed us to continue playing games and instruments because we can social distance and sanitize between classes. This has allowed our children to do their most important work, which is play. All of the aforementioned factors will be affected by the decision to return hybrid students to a full four-day schedule. We will not be able to social distance with seating, which is one of the number one preventative measures for decreasing risk of exposure. We will not be able to do movement activities because we cannot socially distance nor contact tracing. Our children need to move. We will not be able to play instruments because again, we will not be able to social distance and we will not have enough time to sanitize instruments between classes with the instructional time possibly being expanded to forty-five minutes. Mrs. Alexander, the other music teacher and I, have found ways to teach and assess our virtual students in a simpler fashion to our hybrid students in order to make the transition to full in-person learning as smooth as possible when at times appropriate. Our subject is not one that easily lends itself to being translated to a virtual platform, but we have done so by drawing upon our collective professional experience and knowledge with no direction from a curriculum as we have now. It requires a great amount of time to create these lessons and assessments, grade them, comment on return them, and coach communicate with parents, teachers, and administrators. I am able to do these things because my current schedule allows me to do so. Should we move to in-person classes that are forty-five minutes, I will lose the time in my schedule and had to do these things. If you have not been convinced to remain with our current hybrid plan, I ask that you at least consider keeping the specials instructional time at thirty minutes as we will still be responsible for creating in-person and virtual lessons and tasks only borne by special area and special education teachers. I would like to close with saying this. I would get to hear a teacher say, "We do not want our kids back." We would not have become teachers if we didn't want to be with our kids. In a perfect world, I thought all of our children would return and we would go about business as usual. I would be the first to admit that going back a hundred percent in person will be what is easiest for everyone. We are not, however, here to discuss what is easiest but what is best. The goal of the hybrid model was to keep our kids in school and provide consistency for them and their families. The data showed that this has been a success. I know that many schools around us are returning to a full five-day schedule and these parents and educators have frequently told our children, "Just because everyone else is doing it does not make it right." And matters is difficult as we miss assess the risk of a decision versus its benefit. It is my personal opinion that the risk in this case far outweigh the benefit. Our children and families deserve consistency, safety, and the best education we can provide. Continuing the hybrid model allows us to do that. Thank you for your time and consideration and service you provide to our community in making these difficult decisions.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Mr. John Lindhorst. I might need to move that mic up a little closer to you. Or step closer to it. Oh, very well. Oh, yes. Okay. Go ahead.
My name is John Lindhorst. I'm a late nineties graduate of Hillsborough High School and my wife and I have a sixth grader attending the intermediate school this fall. I felt compelled to address the board this evening with concerns about returning to school four days per week mid-semester while COVID-19 continues to impact our daily lives and the communities in which we work, live, play, and teach. With the flu season upon us and the long-term effects of COVID-19 exposure still unknown, I would implore this board to consider extending the two-day-per-week, blue-day, white-day schedule through the remainder of the fall 2020 semester. The pandemic has changed one of us in attendance here differently. My work in higher education was impacted during the spring and summer months as our management team worked tirelessly to provide stability to staff during difficult times and for our educators to provide structure for our students and cohorts, suddenly unable to attend lectures and labs. No doubt that was the same case for your faculty and staff here at the board. Now, mid-semester, I think it is important for the board to acknowledge the precedence of structure and stability that this hybrid schedule is set for the 2020-2021 school year and to consider how a modification to the schedule would impact everything from attendance and grades, discipline issues and behavioral concerns, and the all-around shuffling of the new schedule in the face of challenges like physical distancing of full classes, transportation problems, uh, to more individual grade level and classroom challenges like math squaring and regular sanitizing practices. I would respectfully request that the board consider maintaining the current schedule until no sooner than the start of the spring 2021 semester to provide the stability, the structure, and the security of expectation that our students need in these anxious and difficult and unprecedented times. To continue the current schedule just another sixty days provides our community with an opportunity to understand and evaluate how the start of this year's flu season will impact the rate of COVID-19 spread and help the board to make an informed decision at year's end on whether or not the current hybrid schedule should be extended into the spring 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move to new business. I'm going to open the floor to Dr. Isaacson to share information about the changes proposed for the reentry plan or I'm going to have a discussion among the board members.
All right. Uh, thank you to those of attendance coming this evening and we apologize for a special board meeting. As if you were at our last board meeting, uh, I was not in attendance uh because I was sick with COVID. I lost my taste and smell at that time and this Hildebrand had uh visited with the board and our plan, we had talked about staying in the hybrid as it's proven to be successful in the area of contact tracing. Uh, amongst us superintendents, when we look at data, we've been doing that, we do that every day in looking at this, is even meeting tonight, even as we sit here, I'll be honest with you, out of most situations, I can look at the data and be like, this is what we need to do. This situation, however you look at the data, you can do, it's what are you looking for in the data? You can find and make an argument for whatever you want based on the data. And that's not even skewing it. That's just looking at uh the different information. Some of the things that I'll go through is you can make a rationalization one way or the other on some things. So one of the things, since we've begun, our fourth-day hybrid has been successful from a quarantining standpoint. Across the county and all of us superintendents, uh, I won't say daily, but frequently, we will update a cumulative chart on the number of people that were chose virtual and then the number of in-person students and the number of uh students that were positive, the number of kids who are currently out on the quarantine. It was interesting as we've kind of gone through this month that regardless of what you chose, a district chose, five-day, a hybrid, two-day, the rate of positive COVID cases was fairly consistent across the dis- across the county. Hillsborough, even though we're in hybrid, really had no more positive cases than a five-day school. Part of that, most of our cases as well, aren't in any of the districts, are not classroom-related. They're athletic-related. They're band-related, activities-related. But I can also tell you that people are okay with that, in a sense. That's acceptable risk to them, right, wrong, or otherwise. That's acceptable. As far as Hillsborough, I believe we're still at one classroom-related positive. We've had a quarantine in one building. It was a lunchroom-related. In other districts, uh, there were significant more classroom cases, but those are at the classroom quarantine. But looking at those and visiting with the health department, kind of following up, they won't tell me who, but visiting with superintendents, a majority of the classroom, uh, even within a five-day schedule or four-days coming every day, which would be those schools that currently had a four-day schedule, most of their classroom quarantines occurred at the secondary level. Part of that is you're changing classes every hour. So there's seven different classes. At the K-six level, you're in one class. So if there is a positive case, you may have eight, you know, four, nine, ten students who'd be impacted. Teachers overall had not been as impacted, but they had been impacted depending on the student, potentially. Uh, so along those lines is within, when we talk about data, when you look at COVID-related data, and I get asked this question too, Jefferson County is in red, or they're in orange, what, how are we going to respond? One of the things that we look at from a school standpoint, and it has confounded me a little bit, is, and you can go to the Show Me Strong data, is at showmestrongmo.gov backslash public dot health dot school dot district. And what the state has finally done is they basically, the health departments have the address. So when John Isaacson became a positive, they put my address in the system and they've drawn a boundary, they went in and geo-mapped out Hillsborough District and every school district in the state of Missouri. So along those lines is we can then pull that ages five to nineteen. For the Hillsborough R-three district boundaries, the cumulative COVID-19 cases since March first of all of kids ages five to nineteen is fifty-six. Whereas like Limburg in their district, one-hundred-and-eighty-two, Festus has had thirty-five, Dunkland forty-two, DeSoto seventy-three. And that's public information since March. And then they post it in the last fourteen days. They run it in cycles. The data was through, I pulled it today, ten-six, two thousand twenty. So in the fourteen-day time period beginning nine-twenty-two, in the last fourteen days cases, they number up one to ten if there's under ten. Once you go over ten, like Melville had twenty-three, Fox has twelve uh cases age five to nineteen in that most recent two-week period. Hillsborough is in that one to ten. Okay? Uh, I would say that would be on the lower end. Ages five to nine, but using that same um data, but they disaggregated by ages five to nine, which would be our primary through, say, third grade. There has been somewhere between one and ten cases since March, zero since uh the twenty-second of September. Ages ten to fourteen, there have been twenty since March, one to ten in that age group for the Hillsborough School District. Uh, and then ages fifteen to nineteen. Now, when you look at that, that could include a college kid going to Jefferson, who's nineteen years old. Uh, thirty-six cases since March, one to ten in that latest fourteen-day cycle. When you look at Hillsborough-specific data, uh, and we update this on our website, so I cumulative this out today. So cumulative COVID, these are positive cases since August thirtieth through ten-fifteen. At the primary school, we've had one positive case with one uh positive staff. At the elementary, we've had zero positive students with one confirmed staff. At the intermediate, three with zero confirmed staff. Junior high has had two positive students, two positive staff. Eleven positive students at the high school, two positive staff. Uh, and then other, there's been four other positive uh staff in a non-school building. Uh, so cumulative, we're looking at seventeen cases, which if you go back to that meeting in uh August, when we did, we chose a hybrid and then went to the quarantining um thing. You can see thirteen of our cumulative cases have been at the secondary level. Whereas four have been at the lower level. So that's smart. Uh, in the last three weeks, pre, like including this week, the last three weeks, there have been zero student cases at the primary, zero at the elementary, zero at the intermediate, one at the junior high, and four at the high school. With one staff case at the elementary and one outside of that. Most of our staff cases, all of our staff cases to my knowledge, aside from potentially uh a non-school building, all the staff cases, to my knowledge, have been outside of school related. One of the things that's interesting too, when it comes to contact tracing, aside from, we talked about that discussion, aside from in-house, when I was positive, but my son Andrew was out of school. Aside from situations like that in-home, there hasn't been any positive cases related to quarantines. And that extends beyond Hillsborough. That's a commonality in most of the quarantines. There's a subsequent non-positive, which, that's great, but also, um, you know, there's a lot of kids that have sat home for a lot of days of school and not had um an issue with that. Uh, from a school data, so when you look at the health part of it, that's when I say, if you look at the data, what we're doing is working, right? If you look at that and say, what we're doing is working, is our kids have been saved. When I look at the positive cases, those are our numbers, those are fairly consistent with even the schools that have been back five days. The difference between the two is in the contact trace. At one point, a district had two-hundred-and-fifty kids on. And our numbers, it got high at, at one point, I want to say it was like mid-thirties or maybe a forty, touching that number right in that twelve-to-fourteen-day period directly after Labor Day. So after Labor Day, went up and back down, and now you can see the last three weeks, we're down there. When we think about this decision going forward, you have Halloween, you have Thanksgiving, you have Christmas. But to that end, as we're making this discussion, that's what we talk about is when it, when is the right time? There's always going to be that next event. You know, that's what I'm a little conflicted on, even in making a recommendation, is as we're talking through that is what are, when is going to be those peak events? Uh, that's from the health side. From the grade standpoint, when we talk about student achievement, is there's been, when the kids are here, I can make an argument that it's better for them the way we have it right now when they're here. When Drew is here on Tuesday and Friday, he has a smaller class. Our principals will tell you there's hardly any discipline. You walk around the high school, it's like a mini library. I mean, it really is. And there isn't a discipline in the classrooms. Our teachers are able to dig in and have even more meaningful instruction because they don't have John Isaacson in the back of the room messing around and being a distraction. All of those different things, the kids are engaged because they miss being out of school. The issue is, it's hard when they're gone the three days. Kids are giving us their time here. In a lot of situations, they're giving time at home, but that is, that's hit and miss on a variety of issues as to what's impacting them. So I included um some academic information. When we talk about the academics, is it is true in the classroom, some of the kids are succeeding. At the high school, I asked the principals yesterday to run their Ds and Fs for first quarter progress report. These are the high school numbers. In October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, there were six-hundred-and-twenty-two Ds. This year, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven. Fs last year, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Fs at progress report this year, one-thousand-and-thirty-one. Total number of Fs, Ds and Fs, last year at midterm, nine-hundred-and-sixty. This year, fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-eight. At the junior high, last year, the, and I'll just kind of do, this is the DNF, the number of students with a D and F, it's combined. Two-thousand-and-sixteen progress report, one-hundred-and-seventy-four. Two-thousand-and-seventeen, one-seventy-eight. Two-thousand-and-eighteen, two-eighty-nine. Last year, two-thousand-and-nineteen, one-hundred-and-eighty-two. This year, three-hundred-and-thirty-five individual students have a D or an F. At the intermediate, two-thousand-and-nineteen, twenty last school year this time, one-hundred-and-twenty-four Ds, one-hundred-and-eight Fs. This year, one-hundred-and-twenty-five Ds, two-hundred-and-thirty-four Fs. And it, one-hundred-and-thirty-four or one-hundred-and-twenty-ish more Fs at the quarter. At the elementary, not quite as variance, is combined T and F. Two-thousand-and-sixteen, one-hundred-and-forty-five. Two-thousand-and-seventeen, two-hundred-and-five. Two-thousand-and-eighteen, two-hundred-and-eleven. Last year, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine. This year, two-hundred-and-two. So not a significant difference. The primary did not send out midterms. So from an academic standpoint, and I will get emails on this, and this is one of those things, it's like fifty-fifty in a sense. Some kids aren't selling. This is the best thing for them. Their time is very concise when they're at school. They don't feel like their time is wasted. For some, it's the very worst, is they're not doing well. They're not able to manage their time. And there's a variety of reasons to that. Some are within their control because they're kids. Uh, some is outside of their control. And that's a concern is, we've always said that being in front of the kids, from an academic standpoint, I have to believe I'm going, being in school is the best thing for them. Kids are kids and they're still not going to do homework. You know, they're still not going to study sometimes, but it is, it's not the same. Uh, that's a concern. Now, that end, I'll even before I get to the recommendation, I don't recommend we bring high schoolers back right now. I don't recommend we bring junior hires back right now. Because there's a few factors with that. They are our greatest risk. They are the greatest number of students that are getting it. And when you come to the quarantining aspect, if there is a positive, like I showed in the visual, visuals way back when, Mr. Redenhour, if there's a positive student in the sixth grade, potentially you're looking at nine students. At the high school, Mr. Allison's at the junior high, that's nine students in each hour potentially. That's where you get to the sixty-five. That's how you get to two-hundred kids really quick. So, uh, that's some of that information on balancing that. From an academic standpoint, a hundred percent, your kids need to be here. For a lot of our kids. Uh, not all, some of them, they're selling. Uh, there's concerns, you know, when we talk about, it's been great with kids, we talk about the masks. Is, that was a huge debate and still is. But by being hybrid, we've been able to, kids don't have to wear them all the time. At the elementary levels, when you're in classes and they will be between sixteen and twenty-five, is that accurate? The students in most classes will have to wear their mask all day long. And that will be, that's required, that'll be required. If they don't, we will have to send them home. We address code violation. Will that be a challenge? Yes, for some, for sure. Uh, I think it'll be less, I would hope it'd be less than even several months ago because I think kids want to come back. That's one, that surprised me even on the first day of school. I thought it'd be more of an issue for us, but the kids wore their mask and that really hasn't been an issue, but they also are able to take it off a significant amount of time. Uh, that's a concern. Uh, joining classes, that is a, you know, it's bringing everyone together is going to be like starting the school year over again. But at some point, if we're going to bring them back in the 2021 school year, that's going to occur. There's, that's going to occur at some point unless we say, "We're not coming back." So then that begs the question, when is that time? And I don't know, at the end of the semester or now, is the right time? Our numbers are, that's going to be, who knows? Um, depending on what happens two weeks from now, you say, "Well, that was the wrong decision" just because Halloween or something of that nature. A lot of variables. Um, you know, I know that our staff, that our teachers are concerned about an increase of exposure. With more kids in a class, obviously got to go up some, is I don't want any of our staff members to get sick. I would, I think that, I would hope that they're still able to social distance, but it's not going to be as easy as it was when you had, when you have small classes. Uh, but we will get the PPE, what they need, and I've visited with our organizations to do that. And as we go along, there's better, better face masks and such to be able to do that and so that our staff are comfortable. Uh, it worries me some when we come to talk about substitute teaching. More so than that is transportation. Transportation is my bigger concern than even the teachers, substitute teachers' numbers. Is different districts around us, they've had issues where it's hard to find bus drivers. For us, this is preemptive, is that's our number-one goal even on salaries. It's, we can't find bus drivers right now. That is doubly, if we have uh staff members who are quarantined and such, that is a huge issue for us that we haven't had in visiting with Ms. Miller and Ms. Phillips. The hybrid has allowed us to be able, because there's so few kids riding buses, that when a bus driver was out, they were able to consolidate routes and keep them under. When we go full on the elementary levels, that's not going to be able to happen. Out of all the different things, you know, we got to get the kids here. I can summon a classroom, I can't drive a bus. So that's, you know, that's, that's a very limited group of people that are able to do that. That's a concern. Um, the teachers as well. Other districts have raised their sub rate to a hundred and forty-five dollars a day and such. But our staff absenteeism has been phenomenal. Our staff has been awesome coming to work. The Wednesday virtual day has helped that up, because they were, I think, I'm making, being able to move their doctor's appointments. And our staff also understands how vital each of those days when they have the kids is. Uh, I think that we'll continue to have good attendance. The quarantining piece of it is, I, I don't think that there's going to be widespread teachers out because of classroom contact. There's a greater chance of teachers being out related to contact, from their own contact, at home or in their personal lives. And that's been proven through most of our staff contacts, it has been none here at school. And even in other districts, and I've asked that question. What is the number of, like, staff that had to go out because of their students? And there's been a few, they're professionals and such, but most have been related to activities outside of school, or their children. But is it higher than, if we maintain the hybrid? Yeah, there's a greater risk. I don't think that we can say that there is. Uh, so, the sub shortage, some of the things that are brought up from a school functioning standpoint, from the school bus drivers to substitutes, logistically, the hybrid has allowed us to bridge those gaps, to make sure that we're stable, we're still able to go. I believe that, I mean, that's a fact. Uh, our number of students that have been quarantined has been significantly lower. And even going across the districts that went hybrid had significantly crossboarded, even though we had consistent positive cases as a percentage of the students enrolled. Regardless of what you did, and we're up now, as of today, of course, I make this too small, right at a half a percent. Half of one percent of our students who are enrolled full-time have tested positive at this point. Forty-five, I can say forty-five days, but from August thirty-first to then. So less than half a percent. Uh, in the absence of having specific data and everyone updating theirs today, I, I won't quote the county, but as a specific number, but it's not too far off. Is, that's where I, that's kind of an interesting step. But the percentage when it comes to quarantine situations is much greater. But a lot of that is, again, secondary related. Not, not in all cases, but most of them. So, with that, we go literally, again, I, I don't want to sound wishy-washy, but in a sense I am, because I don't know, and I won't know if for five years from now, what is ultimately the right decision is on this, for each individual kid, because it's different for each individual kid. It's different for everyone sitting in the room, because of the lens that they're looking at. So I know that this isn't one of those a hundred percent of people are going to be at. But if we go back to what is best for kids, from an educational standpoint, it is being in class. When we look at three weeks of there not being any cases at that age group, uh, and looking at, you know, other districts coming in, I would recommend or propose that on November sixteenth, which is, Windsor's coming back on the twenty-sixth. R seven, I believe, is starting Monday, four days a week. Fox is bringing back K one-two on the ninth. And that's public, I mean, that's in the leader, that's public information. Um, is bringing back the rest of their elementary from that point until Christmas, I guess in stages. The sixteenth date, uh, we originally visited with the administrators, and I haven't even updated them on that date. Uh, we had talked about the ninth, but the sixteenth, also, I know it's an additional few days after that, but it clears us past the Veterans Day holiday, and also gets us out of that fourteen-day Halloween window. Um, so on the sixteenth, come back, four days a week, maintain the virtual Wednesday. That virtual Wednesday, uh, has proven so beneficial from the standpoint of collaboration for our staff. It's been a respite for our kids and gathering, getting information, working with our virtual kids. It's brought them together in collaboration as far as our staff. And I think our education will, is, is better on that. Is the other, makes the other four days when we ask our teachers, and we ask them to do a lot. They do more with technology, add in Google lessons. Is, at the end of the day, there, our teachers are working long hours and raising their own families, and it's hard. When do you do that? That Wednesday is when they've done it. And that's been important, I think, to maintain that is important. So, we would also then maintain our current hybrid schedule, seven through twelve, through the end of first semester. Why the difference? Not just from a, um, social distancing and contact tracing. The secondary level is different than our elementary levels. Our elementary levels have virtual teachers at each grade level. Like, uh, many of these specials teachers are teaching hybrid, virtual, et cetera, but so are all of our secondary, or not all. Many of our secondary, junior high and high school teachers are having to do, they have a virtual class, they have a regular in their hybrid classes. One of our PE teachers literally has a full day of classes, but has one hour for PE, and has a hundred and twenty-plus kids in their virtual hour. That's a lot to keep up with for that, uh, one hour of doing that. The Wednesday helps out with that. But to unwind that from a master's schedule is completely, um, I wouldn't say nothing is impossible, but it'll be beyond a mess. Is, we need that natural semester break for those semester classes there, because their makeup is completely different than at the elementary level, because we did not dedicate strictly all virtual teaching. Uh, and then, uh, on, this is a recommendation as of today, based on what we know today, in the current flu season, et cetera, is to update our reentry plan that on January fifteenth, which would be the start of second semester, would be to maintain in-person instruction, four days a week. Uh, maintaining the virtual Wednesday, and then moving the high school to four days a week, maintaining the virtual Wednesday. But that's as we sit here, contract tearing is still going on. We don't know what the numbers will be, but sitting here today, the recommendation would be to continue bringing the high school in, but then maintain four days a week with the virtual day into second semester. Uh, students who elect full-time virtual education for second semester will then begin on that date. I think it's important, this is why I put it here, it may seem early for second semester, but it will be important for parents to make that decision. Some of the parents whose children are really succeeding, they're here on the hybrid, but their kids are taking off, they may elect to do virtual. But we have to know those numbers by the middle of December, because the high school and junior high, I would envision doing something totally different, is we will make, try to make virtual teachers and adjust class sizes to adjust that, to reduce some of the strain on staff. So, that information would be forthcoming with a deadline, early December, is that accurate to say? For those that want to elect full-time virtual for second semester. Now with this change, we have to, if the board would approve bringing back elementary-age students on November sixteenth. If you've elected the hybrid, and your parent and your child, you are staying in the hybrid. We can't allow you to jump to virtual. We don't have the staffing to do that. We made those plans based on that. Similarly, you're like, alright, the kids are going back. I want to go from virtual to hybrid. That cannot happen either, because we already, in making recommendations, the individuals that chose that, made that decision, we were very clear, that's a semester-long situation. And so, that is regardless, even if it's a mask-type thing, we said on November, no, way back when, we're going to look at this prior to November second. If we bring them back, the masks are still in place, the parents, like, I don't want my student to wear a mask, they have to when they can't social distance. We would have to send them home, but they wouldn't be virtual. That would be your truant at that point. So, I think that kind of covers it. I mean, there's pros and cons to both. I've penciled them out both ways, but I feel if we can bring kids back, school is the best place for them. And, or be, when I look at the DNF list and look at, there's risks. There's more risk than in the hybrid, but is there that much significant risk? And the data doesn't appear that. But again, I think we need to, if not now, when? And that's the question I keep. If not now, when? It's Christmas, it's going to be the same thing. If not, worse, right, potentially? Uh, so it's kind of where we're at. So that's where, in order to make this happen too, if the board would approve it, I have to then, um, appeal and write a letter to the Missouri Department of Education to request to do this, because we have a plan already submitted with our calendar, uh, on here. So even a board vote today is to finalize, if they say yes, do I feel like it'll be approved? Yes. Uh, but I, there is a waiver that we have to, we're changing our plan. And so, that's why, in order to get approval, if, or direction, one way or the other, is, and have time to then put the plan in. We have to order more food, et cetera. There's a lot of logistics. In order to have the time, that's why we had to call the special meeting today. One of the things too, is probably if an approval of a plan for four days a week next semester, that will require some calendar modifications as well, because President's Day is on a Monday, and doing some of those type of items to plan for the spring. Because we, it's, it's way out of balance. Uh, but this helps us out a lot. So, any specific questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Um, first question has to do with the cafeteria. So all of those kids are going to be grouped in together. Junior high and high school's not changing their cafeteria plan, but it was a much smaller group before. And now they're going to be packed in there, and more germs flying, or whatever, on food, and they're eating, and they're not wearing their masks there, because they can't social distance, but they can't eat with their mask on, obviously. So, is there a change in, in structure for how they'll do their lunch shifts? Maybe I should ask Mr. Rednour?
Uh, Ms. Carol, or?
Dr. Freeman.
Right now, we have two hours of lunches. And after this, our kids will be regular class sizes at the lunchroom tables. Because we don't, we already have two hours of, we don't have, we don't have time for more lunch shifts.
I get it. So you'll just have more kids squeezed in?
Right. We won't be able to, I have the same idea. We won't be able to, we start at eleven and we end at one right now, when we are socially distancing.
Because you're, you're staggering lines in or classes in.
Yes, and they, they have, the children in our building have their masks on through the line. And then when they sit down, they remove them, and there's three feet between them on either side. That will not, and there's no one on the other side, to the exception of couple tables throughout those two hours.
But that won't happen.
That will not happen anymore.
Mr. Rednour, you have shifts.
Yes ma'am, we, we increased to four lunch shifts this year, as opposed to two. So we have half the number of kids in the cafeteria at a time than we have in the past. Right now, we have two, three kids at the table, making social distance, especially for two. We've got about four to six. We can't socially distance, but like I've already said, their mask up until the time it gets to the table. And as much as less, tables are full of eight, so there will be some distance, but it won't be six feet.
But you have four lunch shifts instead of two? And you start at what, ten-thirty?
Yes ma'am, ten-thirty, twelve-thirty.
For lunch, wow.
And so we have, we have thirty-seven tables, so we spread our way out as far as we can. Take it up, and we expand in the areas that we use, we have that ability, that the other buildings don't have. Do we expand along with the common center area to give space?
You can spread your tables out. Okay, thank you. And how will you address the bus driver shortage? So you're going to try to hire, but?
We have, uh, Ms. Phillips and Ms. Miller can drive. From a technical standpoint, I can drive. Uh, and that's happened. Josh has driven multiple times out of the soda. I call him, I'm like, where are you? In Union, driving softball team. It's that, those type of things, those concern me. And when you talk about, the bus is another, it's like the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Yes, and I would, if we go to this, in my letter, I'll, hey, parents, I mean, I would recommend, if you can, drive your child, because that is an area, when we talk about contact tracing, I know sort of the positivity, when you get, try to keep your, your own child off of contact with, is.
Well, because your secondary course, they can drive, some of them can drive themselves, where your elementary kids, that doesn't happen. And now you can't leave the windows open to help with circulation better. They'll have to be closed. And most of, I don't want to say most, but many of our drivers are retired folk, or of, I don't want to say older age, but my age.
Sure.
And that may be part of your issue, is why you're not getting drivers.
Yes. And it does concern me. Uh, I don't want to lose drivers with the switch. It's a possibility, I mean, no one is, but there's a lot of different factors. It's a tough job, that's one of the, it's a tough job in a, on any given day, let alone that, and when there's health concerns. Is, we could not withstand, we lost three or four drivers to, I don't want to do this, I'm going to die, we'd be in a war. And other districts have had to.
And that's how many, two or three?
How, three, we'd be in a war. Another district saw this, they lost, um, some drivers, and they weren't able to fill, and they, they filled it with Husky, and the rate was fifty dollars, not fifty, five hundred dollars a route. So that's a morning route, five hundred in the afternoon, a thousand dollars a drive. And they had four out, four grand a day, it's twenty grand a week.
That's a big.
That don't take long to add up. So that's, uh, but that's, that's one of those there too, that that, that issue's still going to be in December, and that's going to be our ongoing issue. And we're trying to bring in those ranks, and I don't know how many, you know.
Well, and my third concern question has to do, because you know, there's going to be students that, I did hybrid because we're going to social distance, and I don't want to be in that anymore, I want my kid to go virtual. And this, or vice versa, whatever. Because we've moved. Because we've moved kids, and we shouldn't have when we said, this is how it's gonna be. And we kinda have to stick to our guns on that.
Absolutely.
And that, that concerns me because, you know, those virtual teachers are already overflowing with kids. And if you give more, how are you gonna deal with that?
So I think, you know, we explained in the beginning that this was by the quarter. And that we were gonna be evaluated as a quarter.
Well, we did say that virtual was a whole semester.
Right, but we said that hybrid could be evaluated in quarters. Hey, I, I've got some questions.
Well, but then, my question though is, if I decide, if, or can we move kids who were in hybrid into virtual? And what we did with those elementary class groups was that we pulled a teacher, and they became all virtual. And then their kids would have to then be farmed out. And that's gonna create bigger numbers.
Anytime that has occurred, we've moved some students back and forth based on recommendations from the principals. Flat out the kid not doing anything, or just a variety of issues that it was not just a feeling of mask, there was a specific student issue on that, I don't know.
Sometimes. But that's my concern, is that the flip-flopper, it can't happen.
And that's, again, that could go in the motion, you know, but. Well, of course, and I said in the thing, is that can't on mass scale, otherwise that can't happen.
No.
And that's the policy we're really approving here, is playing with that no-switch.
Well, we said that before.
But we're quartering. We're, you know, those type of situations are quartering. Some of those were early on, to my knowledge.
So if they missed the deadline, they've missed the deadline for the next semester. If they wanna sign up for virtual for second semester, and they come in, oh, I didn't know, or I didn't do it, are we still gonna let them in?
Does Desi, what's our, I'm looking at Alyssa. What does Desi say?
Hundred percent virtual. Yes, we did have to move kids because we had some extenuating circumstances. This, to me, is well beyond that. This, we, we are not moving kids, and that's why we decided, we talked a little bit more yesterday, to move it to the sixteenth.
Right.
That way, if you, if you did hybrid because you felt that was safer, and you wanted to go to virtual, you didn't have that long of a period of time to do that. But yes, we did have to move kids early on, we should extend the circumstances.
Well, I wanna make that very clear, that a deadline is a deadline. And we're not changing because, you know, my, my best friend's in that class, I'm gonna be there now, or whatever. Sorry, Bron.
I mean, this is probably one of the biggest issues that they're on the school board. Because I've got friends on both sides. Friends with kids in the high school and in the second gen of elementary. Friends with kids that drive, and kids that haven't. But a couple of questions. And actually, my daughter went to one day of school, and we got contact traced in about two weeks, couldn't score. If we, if we did this, as the music teacher stated, is there a way to organize the specials in the shorter increments so they can still have the time to clean? Or can they even split classes, and half the class goes for a certain amount of time, and the other half... Something that the specials can still have time to, to clean their instruments or their art stuff, or...
Would they still, this is a question, then would they have to make up the difference in minutes virtually outside of a normal, like, odd, school day? Is that even...
Is that being required for X amount of minutes?
Yeah, they're required for X amount of minutes per age student for special areas, yes.
Right.
So any, if we come back in person, those below that, they would have to make up that time via virtual activities and reaching out?
And I don't have that information in front of me, I can find out to see if that's a possibility. But there, there is time constraints in special areas.
Are we meeting those time constraints now, currently?
Yes, because we account the virtual one that you're doing.
Okay.
What are the, what are the classroom teachers using that, the special time for? Is that planning time for them?
Concerned of privacy.
Yeah, so I mean, if we're, you know, if we keep, if we're putting everyone back for more, yet pulling that away from classroom teachers.
You're gonna have a lesson session.
Yeah.
Classroom teachers have to have, or every teacher has to have a certain amount of planning time per week, two hundred and fifty minutes.
So another thing, we're talking about a month from now. So there's time for families to prepare, there's time for us to prepare. We're gonna have to go back at some point. My thought is, if we're going back now, in a period where there's the younger kids' holidays, they're doing more holiday activities at this time of year, gives the teachers a chance to get the classes re-acclimated so that day one of second semester, you know, they're back to a hundred percent in the running role. What if we get started, and then something happens? Cases skyrocket, and we wanna go back? Will we be able to, because I know, if that's this, if I understand correctly, they tried to cut back, and Desi said they couldn't. So what are the chances that we would have an issue, and then we're stuck?
I don't think we'll be stuck on going back to the social distancing case of it. Or, they'll allow, they would allow us to go back if we had to. Is it ideal? Absolutely not. But being that we've done the hybrid, like we said, it gives us the most flexibility. Because we could do all virtual if we had to, we could do in-person, and we can go to hybrid. Based on what I'm seeing on the numbers, I don't foresee a full school closure, I really don't. I don't foresee a full grade level closure unless it was, the greatest risk of that is all the teachers hanging on in the weekend in one grade level. And that's occurred in local districts, and then them all be having, where they had to shut that and have a grade. But as far as student-related, I don't foresee...
I still just see from the cumulative cases on pages five to nine, they are, I mean, it's definitely age-related. I mean, they, who are looking at zeros on half these schools at that age. And that's with or without, I mean, that's something...
But to answer your question, we could, this has been proven this year, it's, we would have a meeting and pivot, adjust to whatever's in front of us at that time.
What would determine that? If the county was red?
I, no, I don't think...
Or number of cases?
Because I think we have to look at it from a, how is it impacting our kids and our staff? Because even on red, I mean, we're talking, I, I get on county meetings, and there's a meeting today, talking about how to get a community awareness and such, how like, our county's cases are going up. And that's where candidly, I'm like, looking at like, what am I missing? Like, there, there are things, but it hasn't for our kids. And even our staff, they've done a great job of, it hasn't impacted us. And when we talk about potential cases, when you talk about, you know, an increased risk of ca, of students, are, to that end, our teachers are seeing all these, these aren't new students. It's just, I see John today, I see Mr. Moore tomorrow. We're not adding, Mr. Schuss, we're not adding another student, we're adding, they're just coming every day. And so, to that end, I don't think it'll be a specific, the health departments doing something. Because some of that is in Arnold, or Fenton, or, and maybe Hillsborough.
And mostly, actually, a lot of the groups in certain areas, like nursing homes, notorious for that. And which is not here.
We'll respond to Hillsborough specifically.
I mean, I want my kids back at school as soon as possible, and they want to be back at school. They're dying to get back to school. They miss their friends, they miss their teachers, they miss that structure. My biggest fear is that if we go to four days, and then let's say we do have an outbreak, let's say we need to go back to a hybrid schedule, we're changing our routine in the middle of a quarter. That's gonna be a hard adjustment on the family, that's gonna be a hard adjustment on the kids. It's gonna just be hard to pivot, I think, in the middle of a quarter. If we need to switch from four days back to hybrid. That's my biggest fear, is we don't really have enough, right? We don't know that contact tracing numbers are gonna increase.
But that's never going away. That possibility is never gonna go away. Not, not in years.
My concern though, is for those families that do have children in daycare facilities, or they've made arrangements for this hybrid time to have their child taken care of. And, I mean, I remember when my kids were in daycare, I signed a contract saying that my kids would be here for this timeframe. And then, they're gonna have to get out of this, and if it happens again, then we have to go back to that. That, to me, sounds...
The going backwards again is never going away. That's always the rule, that's always gonna be there. That, that is always ever-present. So i- it's really the change too, that's the only real change they're gonna be experiencing.
Okay, but not necessarily.
We also have to look at this, that there's a possibility we could have to switch back to hybrid at some point.
Right.
And is this the best time to make that change, or not?
Well, I mean, and when is? I mean, I, I would like, my, I mainly, I've said it before, there is no end game for our officials. There is no end game for any of this stuff from any public official I've ever heard. And it's refreshing to finally hear, hey, maybe, you know, if we get to X point, you know, because zero cases is a face, vaccines for everybody is close, you know. So, I mean, we're, we're basically looking at a never-ending situation. If we're, you know, if we're that risk averse. If we're that risk averse, we may as well just say, this is it forever, this is school. And honestly, I think the best thing for kids has been said, I mean, the presentation even, it floored me. I like the honesty there, but it was, hey, we want five-day school, that's what's best for kids. We know this is a bad deal. And it doesn't surprise me one little bit, actually, that we're looking at a bifurcation where some kids are going up and some are going down because the kids that do well in school usually are the ones who are already self-motivated. And the ones who you need to ride and that, well, you can bring them up. But without that, I mean, they're gonna sink. You know, they, they just need some external motivation. I'd say fifty-fifty, that doesn't surprise me.
But right now, we are seeing the highest levels of Ds and Fs at the secondary level, not...
Well, true, because a lot of, because we are expecting more self-motivation, I think, out of the higher grade levels.
I, I think maybe, in some cases, we're expecting them to do more now than if they were attending class in real time. And I, might be something that we need to address. I mean, I've heard that.
Well, and two, last spring when we were virtual, we didn't take grades. And so now, we're coming back and we're saying, okay, you have to do this and do that. And it's, it's hard for those kids to adjust back to that. And, well, I used to do it this way. And, but on the other hand, I don't know, I'm not in all those virtual classes. I don't know how much stuff is being poured on them too. If teachers are trying to keep the pace that they always keep, and they're putting more work on those kids. I've heard that from parents, that in some of the high school classes, that they just have so much online virtual work that they can't keep up.
I mean, as an example, my grandson got an email from a teacher at eleven o'clock in the morning, and gave an assignment that was due at seven o'clock that night. That would not happen if really...
Jen, have you talked to the other suits about the academic portion? Are they seeing similar numbers?
Yes, and today, briefly, we need to all speak up because I think the audience is having some difficulty hearing us. Yes, county-wide, this isn't a Hillsborough. We're not alone with our children, not one to do, this is county-wide, for sure. I mean, we even talked to Desi about it, like, how do we reach these kids that are doing virtual and literally not doing anything? And the state's like, well, you gotta figure it out. So this is...
Well, I, I know we talked before, but, and I don't know how, I don't know how we have to do it. I know other districts around our general area are doing it. But making kids show up and sign in, or at the high school level, I'm gonna be there for hour one. Don't have to be there the whole time, but maybe I'll be there for the second period or the third period. Just to show up more. I know kids not showing up on virtual is a big thing. And I, I mean, I don't know how you make them do that. But because some kids are only coming in in the evening versus the daytime, that's, that's really hard on our teachers, because then they become on-call twenty-four-seven. And that's, teachers can't do that. There's no way.
And that's one of the things that needs, like, for us to work at the secondary level, is, to that end, is, we have teachers who are doing both. And one of the things that, that's a challenge, and that's why we have to change it, is to, at the secondary level, to log in, and this hasn't occurred in, to my knowledge, in our district. But it's occurred in others, I'd like to blow my mind, in New Reality of Education, is you have a class, and they were live-streaming into the class, and you had random, the parents in different houses, like, hey, how are you? They talk, literally, talking over the teacher in class, so there's that. Your virtual, at the secondary level, they don't have just virtual only. So those are things we never even thought about. Because I don't disagree, we have to continue to find that hook to check in. But it's proven difficult to try to do that.
Well, and live-streaming is, is difficult too, because, you know, I'm the teacher, and I tell Billy to sit down, or, you know, that answer's not right, or, let's try something else. And then, parents get upset, you're picking on my kid because everybody saw that. I don't know how, I don't know how to fix that aspect of it. But I do know that kids aren't showing up for virtual things, and that's a problem. And that definitely would explain the low grades. Like, I don't show to class, I'm gonna get a low grade.
Something fixable with four-day...
Say that again.
It's something that can be fixed with a four-day schedule, though, in the sense that their attendance is not gonna be that it is, like, it is at the virtual. I think a lot of it is that routine that we talked about, you know, two months ago. This is completely different, and out, you know, out of the ordinary for anybody. And having, you know, as a young adult going into college, you know, I didn't have to study much in high school, still did well. Going to college and try to do that, yeah, that doesn't work very well, you know, I mean, you've gotta put in the time. And it took me a little bit personally to kind of, oh, hey, I need to figure out what works for me. So I can imagine these, these, you know, young adults are kind of feeling the same way.
Right.
You know, what works, what doesn't work? And then you kind of, you know, just kind of throw, forget it, what am I gonna do now? You know, I can't figure that out. So I think the touring is gonna help that, as long as they take advantage of it. You know, it's something really worth setting up, but...
John, I know you're a data guy. Do we have data yet on if there's a commonality on where some, a lot of the deaths are at certain subjects or certain classes? Or even certain teachers?
I just got, Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I can tell you they're all over the place. Yeah, typically, our highest home runs are from math, if you can imagine that, because it's something that requires daily, daily, daily practice. I ran our PE numbers zero to eight, they're just as high as our math. Kids work their butts off when they're there, they do all the workouts, they go home, they don't log in and do their PE logs. So they lose fifty percent of their grades because they only do maybe one or three PE logs. So every class, every teacher across the board has that. And it's mostly due to missing work. And it does, the way our system is set up with Ds and passing being sixty or higher, it doesn't take... it doesn't take much. When you have a day off, if you do nothing on a Wednesday, um, that's twenty percent of your grade. Many of our quizzes, many of our assessments are done on those days. We have people not taking some of the assessments, given three or four days to do that, and they're just not doing it. And they know that that's eighty percent of their grade.
Would there be a way to pull, sorry, would there be a way to pull a P E and see how many of that maybe do the missing assignments? You know, that's something that kind of crops up a lot. I don't know if it'll go down that far or not.
Another thing is, how are we going to do progress reports? You know, is there a large percentage of parents that maybe think everything's going great? If they get a copy and see what's going on, they might want to be more involved?
Well, progress reports can get students a little more motivated, and, because like I said, last spring, there weren't grades, and now, oh, gosh, I'm not doing very good, you know? And if parents then know that, they're going to put a little more pressure on their students to...
So are we emailing progress reports to parents?
Do we email them or do we send them hard copy to the shit?
He sent hard copy.
Elementary, hard copy?
Hard copy.
Hard copy at the intermediate?
What about the high school?
High school? Mr. Groner's.
There's, the high schools are electronic.
Electronic.
But I can, I can tell you from the, the high school, I was just talking to a counselor the other day, when they ran, ran that D and F list, they went around and teachers went around each one of those kids, and within hours, some of those Ds and Fs were disappearing because it was a matter of, hey, I need this assignment, I need this assignment, I forgot to turn that in, oh, shoot, I forgot to turn that in. So I know, been speaking to a couple of counselors the other day, that some of those were disappearing fast just by making that contact. And that's a normal thing at prog, at progress report times, too. Or as it gets, gets close to the end of the semester, teachers are getting all kinds of things that haven't been turned down. I know that's been personal experience.
As far as I can see, it just boils down to, is five-day school, do we want it or do we not? You know, because if we do want it...
It's not five-day school.
I know, but I mean, the ultimate goal, because that was the ultimate goal stated when we first started all this.
Okay.
If, you know, do we really want to go back there or not? And if we don't, well, okay, that's a different debate, we'll be talking across campuses all night. But if we do, if we really do, I'd like to know the conditions that are keeping people from wanting that right now. What, what is making people so uncomfortable that is going to change in the future? That's what I, I personally, I'd really like to know that, because as he puts it, if not now, when? What is holding us back? You know, as, as far as the data goes, K through six is pretty low risk. It's, the contact tracing is really, with zero kids actually from contact getting it, that tells you that it's not, it, it's a bureaucratic hurdle, but it's not an actual sick hurdle. It's not a real physical hurdle here. So if our concern is really for what's best for the kids, you know, is, what is holding us back on K through six? That's what I want. And because then it'd be like, okay, what condition is necessary for it to, to change?
Okay, I'm not sure what, which issue you're talking about, because you talked about a five-day, then you talked about just K through six coming back.
Well, I'm talking about in this case, because I understand the contact tracing bureaucratically makes it impossible to do in high school. I understand that.
Okay.
I don't agree with you. I, but I understand...
But it's still something we're, we have to follow.
But with K through six, since we're not looking at even a very high case rate at all, regardless if it was five-day or hybrid or even countywide, the numbers, then what's holding us back?
So with, with, just with the tracing in general, John, I think, you know, looking at the numbers, you can definitely see that's slowly going up as you get older and in the upper grades. So is that because, like you talked about with the scores, the lack of distance, you know, playing football, that type of thing, and that? You know, will we see more of that at the lower levels once they get back together? That, that, that's the big question.
Well, and I, I feel like that question is answered a little bit because we have control groups, right? I mean, we have groups that were getting together and the case seemed to be, it really didn't materially affect...
And I think, too, you know, at the lower levels, we may see more classrooms, if you will, you know, if we have quarantine, it might just be a specific classroom because that's who they're together with versus, you know, the, the seventy or so, like we would potentially see at the high school, you know, high level, you know, check classes and that, so...
But these troubles aren't going away, though, regardless. And so my point is, is it ever going, if it's never going to change, then we have to admit that you want, we want hybrid forever, you know? I mean, that, that, I just want some honesty there, you know, we realize what we're really saying here.
To like, kind of answer your question, my look on the contact tracing is, so far, right, we haven't had to have an entire nine kids in a classroom be quarantined, and we'd only had two in-school quarantines occur, two kids. Well, if you look at, if you're going to four days a week, depending on when the student found out they had it, is, you know, at the intermediate, they've had three cases, positive cases, since school. So I'm going to assume that those kids were in different classes and came, is, the reality is, you're going to have, it's going to be more than what we have now, you're going to potentially have one, two, nine, and depending if, did they ride the bus? You could have thirteen, fourteen kids go home. It won't be forty-five, it won't be thirty, but that particular could be, Mrs. Walker's sixth-grade class had eight kids out of her class have to go home for two weeks. That, and that happened on three different occasions, that is, but that's going to occur no matter, again, when, as long as the contact tracing is in place, that'll be there. The elementary would have had none, and the primary would have had the one situation, so...
So just to understand you, if we had gone four days, we would have had the zero at the elementary and the zero at the, now, I mean, you can't say that definitively, but...
And that's where, based on this, hindsight'd be twenty-twenty, but then you also, well, maybe the hybrid caused that, you know, I mean, that's what, but that's where...
Well, or the cafeteria.
The cafeteria is, cafeteria and the bus are our greatest risk as far as pushing back. I could never see, I don't know, in, being within the six feet for fifteen-minute rule, depending on a class, an entire class being out at like nine, depending on a cafeteria. But even there is, that's where, this is going to be additional work for our staff, our teachers there, is their classroom. If I'm sitting next to Ms. Walker in class, next to Mr. Moore, I need to be sitting in between them and the lunchroom. You know, and have that type of, if one of us goes, we're all going, but if Ms. Oshie goes, even if she's in my class, I'm probably not going to be impacted, so...
Okay. I'll answer John's question because I'm, I'm kind of on the fence, I'm very conservative about that. One thing that concerns me, I feel like we're going to be using our K through, lower, K through six, lower-level kids, kind of, uh, kitty-pigs to see what the results will be. Um, I know that DeSoto and Northwest has had to send home entire classrooms, um, due to, you know, COVID, which, of course, that's a concern, because when they go home, they go home for two weeks.
Entire classrooms of elementary students?
Yes. Um, with, in Northwest, I know two classrooms, one was a kindergarten and one was a fifth-grade Maple Grove, and the kindergarten was in DeSoto, I believe. It was a fifth-grade classroom, that the entire classroom was open. Uh, and I do believe that our numbers are low because of what we've done.
Thank you.
The flu season is coming, the consistency, the structure, so many of those things that, uh, people who've written letters, plus those who spoke tonight, um, you know, those are concerns of mine as well. Um, you know, I, of course, I'm a high school teacher, so my normal breaks are those semesters, so I kind of, um, am wondering if we ought to just go ahead and continue hybrid and reassess all of this after the get-go in the fall of the flu season and look at bringing kids back in January, if we make it to the flu season, et cetera, et cetera. And let some of the other schools do the same, because it's still our case.
And flu, flu season will be here in January, and honestly, the last couple of years has been heavier, January, February, March, than past earlier in the year, so, I mean, I, I see that point, but, sort of, this last four or five, it hit that hard fall versus late winter or spring. But like John said, we should be here, too. Keep going back to your point.
Yes. No matter what we do.
Yeah, I, I just want to know what's going to change, other than we're letting other schools dip their toes in the water first.
That's what we did.
What's really going to change?
Well, we didn't with the hybrid. We kind of did that first.
And, you know, were we worse off for it?
I didn't work.
I don't think we were worse off for it, no.
But the thing is, other than that, what's really going to change in January?
I don't know. We don't have as many events in the winter, like we do with Thanksgiving and, you know, every time, every holiday that came, we saw that big uptick.
Sure, but we're going to have, there's going to be, there's going to be, uh, school next year at this time, too, you know? And we're not going to see what that looks like until we do it, there's always got to be a first time. So why wait until fall, you know, twenty-one, is that going to be a better time?
Somebody's proposed that date, but I don't know.
You know, states are still going to be grouped together around this time of the year next year.
Okay.
Is what I guess I'm saying.
I, I see.
I mean, I'm honestly torn. I want our kids back in school. Academically, they do better when they're in the classroom, but I'm honestly torn because I believe hybrid has cut our numbers low. I really do think that hybrid was the best solution in keeping that contact tracing low. But I am torn. My kids want to be in school and want them to go on academically, they do better when they're in the classroom. So I am, I'm truly torn here, so, it's a tough decision.
Well, Beth brought up letters or emails, and I've received only one email that said they, you know, that they, they wanted to go to the four-day, where the rest of them were all, please don't change, keep the hybrid. So I had, I had five emails that says, don't change, and I only had one that said, yeah, let's go to four-day. We want to...
I have said no one asked me to go four-days. Everybody wants to stay with the hybrid, that I've, that's what I think.
I had one person tell me four-day was their option, however, their concern was, is there going to be a point where we have to go back to hybrid during the quarter? And if so, that change in the routine is their concern, because they've set up arrangements, now they're going to change their routine. Is there a possibility that routine shouldn't be changing again, depending on numbers and everybody?
And that's what I meant earlier, especially daycare situations.
Exactly.
That's really hard. Well, any other thoughts or questions? Things we need to discuss?
Does this decision have to be made tonight, first of all?
I couldn't hear what Hanky or Erin said.
She wanted to know if this decision had to be made tonight.
Oh.
But if we meet next week, and give us some time to ponder that.
What's, what's going to change, John?
You know, I just...
It, and, and honestly, it's better if we make the decision sooner if we're going to change.
My family's more determined, right. We've heard from our teachers, but we heard from, other than a few parents I've heard from...
Well, I heard from a former board member, Jane Heine, and she was, as a parent and, um, someone in the medical field and a former board member, she was asking not to change the deviation in the hybrid plan.
To answer your question is, we, this is our current re-entry plan, we said that we had evaluated before. The board doesn't say, go to four-day, we're status quo, we're in a hybrid until the board would give us a directive to come out of it. And that's how I would treat it, is, I'm not going to call a meeting every week to... Yes.
Thank you, John.
Yes, basically, um, it would, this semester, I probably would look for, um, I feel like we need to make a decision while we're going to do second semester. And so, based on this, if there's no, um, even now, I guess if I left this meeting, I'd say, we're going to be in the hybrid second semester. But I also need to send that to Desi, because we kind of, we got to update our calendar and plan for that as well. The principals are going to need to plan for something, is, if, if there's a chance from, if the board feels like we ought to be in the hybrid, even starting second semester, because on the pivot thing, Mr. Schuster is correct, is that even switching to a four-day, you could get in the middle of third quarter and the days are going to spike, and we're going to have to go back to that. That's going to occur throughout the year, no matter when we start on that. Again, we could start on a clean, but in the middle of third quarter, you could bounce back down. Um, I think there's just as much chance then as there is now. There's going to be base, unless there's no quarantine, that would be something that would, if contact tracing goes away. So, but we do need to have a plan for how we're going to start second semester soon. And I would say, I would really prefer the October board meeting. And it's hard, it's next week to, or even tonight, if, if the board's like, let's stay in hybrid, but we're okay starting the four-day at semester, because then we can plan, I will write, because I still have to write the same letter to Desi, but that way, parents can plan to make that decision for themselves, I'm going to keep my kid in virtual, or if my kid was in hybrid doing well, I should have went virtual, we're going virtual, or I'm going four-day. We need, uh, we really need a month and a half to do that, because November's going to be, with Thanksgiving, it's chopped up, December's short, because Mr. Groner and Mr. Allison specifically in those buildings, they have to kind of reinvent the wheel, but they need to know the numbers that they're working with to be able to pull a teacher out and all that, so, um...
Can we guys have sent out a survey, like you did at the beginning of the school year, to the parents, to allow them, or to find out whether they want to go virtual or not at semester? I mean, would that help you guys at all?
I guess.
We, we will, on the virtual instruction, we'll be sending out a survey for who wants to do it, um, specifically, but that'll be an election, not who might do it. Like, that survey will be sent out, and once you choose in December, you are now a virtual student.
Right. But they'll have that option.
That will be sent out in December. But, see, we need to send, we need to send that out in early November, so Mr. Groner knows, all right, I have fifty virtual science kids, so I need to pull this teacher to teach that class, et cetera.
Well, I have to say, I mean, our concerns for not going four-days, our concerns are in routine, and their adult concerns, their family concerns. But I know academically, my kids do better when they're in school. So we are stressed to do what's best for students, they need to be in school.
Well, I was looking at the calendar, and after the sixteenth, there's not a lot of days.
Yeah.
Because you have Thanksgiving and then you leave early for Christmas, it's like five weeks at the most.
And that's what I was just thinking about, you know, we talked about summer school, the triathlon, that, because that, four or five weeks there, kind of... Four or five weeks there kind of almost could be that trial run for that four-day going into second semester.
They're talking about the time between Thanksgiving.
You're a mumbling.
I know.
The time between Thanksgiving and Christmas almost being a trial run, like summer school for the four-day.
He said earlier, by the way, that flu season generally, the pattern has been that it's stronger actually now after January.
After January?
I'm going to have to say that will be here all this time.
The hybrid, are we, do we, are we out for snow days? Is everybody virtual and we aren't missing snows?
No, we visited with that yesterday. Snow day is still a snow day.
Snow day is still a snow day.
So we've missed a lot of schools, we're going to send them to snow days. There should never be another snow day ever again.
So Eric, pretty much what you, what you're saying is that I'm not going to feel any better in the inquiry about, will we go home?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
What he said.
Yes.
Okay, so do we need to bring this to a vote then? We need to make a motion?
I make a motion to go to four-days, don't change it, six.
As outlined in the reentry.
As outlined in the reentry.
Well, as it, he said as the entry plan, so it would be November sixteenth, and then secondary coming back in January. Whatever that day was, I forgot. I have to look again. The nineteenth.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to approve the reentry plan as presented, correct? With the four-day in-person and one-day virtual for K through six beginning November sixteenth, and the four-day in-person and one-day virtual starting for secondary on January fifteenth. Is that when it starts, this semester begin? Okay. Did you get that? Okay, so discussion then.
So the tools that are available to the parents through the hybrid model, are they still going to be available if we go to four-days? Meaning the communication or Google classroom, the emails, things like that? Or will we be kind of shutting that down and just being?
No, that's one of the important parts for keeping Wednesday virtual. Because we have this technology, it's here to stay. And the teachers need that time to do that. This isn't, all right, go back to the old way of education.
We are still going to be incorporating the technology piece through the four-days.
Because Wednesday will still be a virtual day.
And then how does this impact visitors in buildings? I know right now there's no visitors in buildings, will that stay the same or will that change?
That'll stand the same.
The only change to the reentry plan would be the hybrid one, yes. So everything else in the reentry plan is staying the same, correct?
We have two requests. One is, looking into this snow day, if you sound, I know my clients does not have snow days. They're set up that they can have school with a snow day. If we've got this technology, how can we?
Talk louder.
How can we make it work to have school on snow today?
And here's the thing, we plan to, that's why I'm in agreement with you, snow days will be virtual days. One of the reasons we're not right now is we've missed so much school of in-person that every day with teachers is too valuable during this school year to bring them back. Because otherwise, and part of that too, somewhere on, the high school is still going to be in hybrid. So in December, Monday's a snow day, and Thursday's a snow day, that kid didn't get any in-person school, and they still may not, is how do you balance that out? It becomes a nightmare. Do I foresee using technology so we never have a snow day again? Absolutely. But I just need to coordinate that.
My second thing is just reassuring that we're going to work on this DNF thing. Because the secondary's not going back four-days until January.
Sure.
And so there's a lot of time for that to get worse, et cetera.
And that's. Can that be something you guys break to us?
Sure.
Next week.
And here's, one of the lasting impacts of that, and why this is so huge, aside from individual, right, education, is when you're in high school, it's the real deal, right? Is if you don't have credits, you won't graduate. And whatever the reason is, kids still have to meet the graduation requirement set forth by the Board of Education. Is we can't have a bunch of fifth-year seniors type of situation, and that's where they have, we have to, we're not going to give grades, you got to know it, but that's a huge concern of ours. We don't have enough room at the learning center for credit recovery and all that. That will be an issue when you have fourteen-hundred Fs or Ds and Fs.
That's essentially that for every student.
Yeah, eleven-hundred, that's eleven.
Wow, but they get several grades.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, but I'm saying the number of Fs.
Monumental.
But the other thing too is, this is really good preparation because colleges are moving this way. Anyway, not that they're at the college level, I'm not saying that, but it's going to, it's going to come to that. I see that in the future. I see a lot of colleges and JFCO and, I mean, they go to online.
It depends on if you, it depends on if you school though in a diploma, it's a stepping stone to college or it's something else. I mean, so.
Well, it's still prep, preparatory for those kids that are going, or no matter where they're going.
Related to this, if I may, kids with, I have a problem, as a kid with special needs, five-oh-fourths and IEs has never been addressed, and this is a situation where they're floundering because they're not getting that individual attention. So I'm not sure how to address that in this hybrid with the Ds and Fs, because I'm sure you're seeing that group greatly depressed.
And our special ed.
I have another question.
Our special ed kids are meeting with special ed teachers as well, correct, Matt? And assignments are still, should still be modified for those kids that are struggling, who have an IP. Five-oh-fours are a different ballgame, but their modifications, some of those are already being done because they're home too, right? Preferential seating and extra time to do their assignments, those are a lot of the modifications for five-oh-fours. And it's also, all of that has to do with Desi too, right? They have to approve what we're doing for those students. And I guess, I don't know if, oh, there he is. I've lost you that blue. I strongly suggest talking, if you have a student in that situation, working with the classroom teacher and their resource teacher.
I brought that up to the principal, I brought that up to the special ed, and there's nothing different being done for, I have two kids in high school, one in California. There's nothing being done in his motivational level that is very low at this point, as well as dress up here, his grades are suffering. It's, I'm more concerned by his knowledge of learning than his grade per se, and he's not learning the material. There's so many workarounds to what's occurring virtually, with looking things up, not reading the material, finding the answers. That's, that's a big concern over continuing hybrid or incorporating that into a hybrid-type schedule.
I understand that. I'm going to direct you to meet with maybe Mr. Whitehead, who is our special ed director, and/or Dr. Isaacson after the meeting. Is that a?
And that's fine, but I'm bringing up, there's a lot of kids with IEs and whatnot, so I think that needs to be.
Well, and I know that other buildings are doing things, I mean, I know that our resource teachers are doing things to help modify, and so that those students can be successful as well. I don't know your situation, and you said it was high school, so that's kind of out of my framework. But, but that's, that would be my suggestion. Okay, we still have a motion on the floor?
I have one more question.
Okay.
When it comes to transportation and with the bus, I know in the lower grades, I have a child in a building where we have to sign up for ride or row. Are we going to allow parents to make adjustments to sign up to be drop-off and pickups? Or are they committed to riding the bus if they signed up to ride the bus? Or will we allow adjustments to that in some of those buildings?
Adjustments to, can we make adjustments to ride or row now with this? Maybe a parent has been riding the school bus, but they're like, eh, I'd rather, I'm going to bring my kid now because there's.
Can we add, let students who were riding the bus?
Yes, can we add?
Yeah, add, of course, yes.
Scott shaking his head yes. Okay. Any other questions? All right, so the motion then is to approve the reentry plan changes as presented this evening. Does that make sense? Okay, all in favor of approving the reentry plan changes, raise your hand. Doesn't matter to you, one, two, three, four, okay. Thank you, three, and all opposed, raise your hand. And that would be three. So a motion carries and by a vote of four to three. Okay, that finishes our agenda for this evening. We thank you for attending. We have a motion to adjourn by John, second by somebody over here, Eric, the quietest. All in favor of, okay, there you go. Thank you very much.